All right, we are recording and we are going to be continuing where we left off last time. With Frederick Douglass's Is the Constitution of the United States Pro or Anti-Slavery? Yeah, so we kind of just briefly grazed it last time, didn't really have enough time to get into it in depth. So we just wanted to get in depth and give it some justice.
Exactly, exactly. I mean, we did have a lot to do last week in terms of covering three different texts. And unfortunately, in order, this was last. Well, also, well, just about. I was gonna say it might be chronological as well, but anyway. So what did we discuss maybe and what, just real quickly, you know, and then maybe what wasn't discussed that would be relevant to discuss, right? We know that Frederick Douglass was a former slave. We know obviously as an African American, he has a. Well, I was gonna say invested interest, that's horrible. He has, he has a total and warranted desire to emancipate, fully emancipate African Americans in America, well, African Americans at the time. And, and so in the context of this writing, is basically making a case specifically about the Constitution. And I know that we, I know that, well, I'm sorry, the Constitution, whether or not it's pro-slavery. And I know that we did discuss some of the pieces about how he was just limiting himself to the text, just the plain words of the text, not the intention and not the disparate views of all of the different founders who might have disagreed with the final pieces of the final Constitution or held pro-slavery sentiments privately. He's like, I'm not concerned about any of that. I'm just looking at the text. And we did, we did address some of the attacks because obviously there's a sort of an interlocutor on the sidelines that we don't see, but he's speaking for, that apparently has pointed to particular articles in the Constitution saying that they're pro-slavery and he is doing sort of a revision on that in terms of how he's interpreting it.
Yep. And I actually went back and reread parts of this and made more thorough notes.
Oh, go for it.
So, I mean, we already started with kind of his, his basic premise is to view the Constitution as plain text. It's a document that outlived the framers. We kind of talked about this and their motives are not explicitly stated within the Constitution. And we have, we have the text as it is. And then I have a couple bullet points about the different articles and areas that he was attacking or responding to. So for one, the Constitution does not explicitly refer to slaves by people or slaves or people by color. So Article One, Section Nine was kind of the section that he was, one of the sections that was talked about. And it refers to indentured servitude of which slaves are not included, but they aren't like as they are not reimbursed and it's not a permanent situation. Or it is a permanent situation, which indentured servitude is not. So that was kind of this important distinction that he was making. That they're actually not covered under that clause of that article. So that was for Article One, Section Nine.
Nine, right?
Yeah. Then there was, oh yeah, we, we talked about this a little bit.
Article One, Section Two.
Yeah, so there is, there's the political power point of view, which is it's actually more advantageous for free states than slave states because those her slaves in a slave state would actually get two fifths more of a vote if they lived in a free state instead. Like the same people just moving in location and basically having a different political status.
Now, I'm curious. That gives slaves representation of three fifths of the slave population. But the, the question is, what does, let's see, Article One, Section Two, right? I'm looking at that real quickly.
So he has a quote from it, but it's not the whole.
Yeah, go for it. Well, that's fine.
Yeah, so I mean, here at the bottom of page four seventy-one, he quotes, "Representatives and direct taxes shall be appointed among the several states which may be included in this union according to their respective numbers, which shall be determined by adding to the whole number of free persons, including those bound to service for a term of years and excluding Indians not taxed, three fifths of all other persons."
Okay, so. Okay. So what I'm curious is, how do we know that the three fifths is only applying to slave states? From that, from that, do you hear what I'm saying?
Because including those. That's a good question, actually.
If it was applying to black people in both free and slave states, then obviously the argument doesn't hold.
Right, so I think he quotes Article Four, Section Two as well. "No person held to service or labor in one state under the laws thereof escaping into another shall, in consequence of any law or regulation therein, be discharged from such service or labor which shall be delivered up on claim of the party of whom such service or labor may be due."
Oh, oh, wait a minute. Oh, oh, no, no, I'm sorry. I'm actually, so I'm looking at it now and it looks like it's the third big paragraph, Article One, Section Two of the Constitution. "Representatives and direct taxes shall be apportioned among the several states which may be included within this union according to their respective numbers, which will be determined by adding to the whole number of free persons." There it is. "Including those bound to the service for term," including, so there's now, so it's including free.
Yes.
"Excluding Indians not taxed and three fifths of all other persons." So that would possibly therefore include slaves.
Or former slaves or those people of color in state, in free states, because they'd be considered free persons. Yep.
Yeah, so the key element there is, is the lead-in, adding to the whole number of free persons. But, but in fact, I mean, it seems more of like, well, excluding Indians. And you, one could say because they're not actually part of the union, not because they're whatever inferior, you know, beings. Right, they're just, in other words, they're just not part of the union. They're natives that are here. It's another issue about their treatment, but nonetheless, looking at the logic of it. And then, yeah, three fifths of all other persons.
Yeah, so it's a slightly different distinction between Indian and slave.
Yeah, and I, and I thought that was a, just a stroke of genius there in terms of seeing, like, looking closely at the text to see how you could draw that conclusion.
Yeah, and I think later he pointed out that there was one state from the beginning of the Constitution that actually was a free state. And then since then, to the point of his document, eighteen states had become free and then only three more states had become slave states. So from the beginning, there have been free states and that's probably part of the reasoning that went into this clause being the way it was written.
Yeah, yeah.
And then, let's see. Oh yeah, so. Because, he also made the argument, so because of his prior point about Article One, Section Nine, which refers to indentured servitude and not to slaves. You can conclude that slaves are considered property or things and not people under servitude. And then he gets to this point where if the language is ambiguous, like it has more than one interpretation and one interpretation is innocent and the other harmful, then the innocent interpretation should be assumed.
Yes, yes, I remember that.
And to support that, he has, "We the people do not distinguish slaves from person of color or from white slash free." And like I mentioned, there have been free states from the beginning of the Constitution.
Exactly. And also, is this where, the last point you made about sort of like, I guess where the, the law is, or if you have two interpretations, you take the one that's more sort of like beneficial or whatever. Is that, is that only around four seventy-six?
Yeah.
Starts talking about law and Blackstone's definition of law?
Yes.
Okay, okay, yeah. Where Blackstone defines it as a rule prescribed by the supreme power of the state commanding what is right and forbidding what is wrong. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, that's it. We must, we must in all cases adopt that which makes it accomplish an innocent purpose. So I guess with that, basically there, so let's put it this way, just to tease it out. How is it the case, and I know we might say, oh my God, it's obvious, but how is it the case that viewing property in man does not have an innocent purpose?
Right. So there are definitely a bunch of different things that, that go into this. And we saw one of them in the last case that we were looking at, which was transporting people from state to state. It's like, it's different than transporting a piece of property. And then there's also, like, there's also just, from a biological perspective, there's hardly any difference between a slave and a person and then, but there's a huge difference between any other piece of property and a person.
Sure.
So.
Sure, and you'd also have to be sort of like in, like, you'd have to be like sincerely blind of some sort. Not to see that this being suffers or that this being does not appreciate its slavery. Do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
You're not going to get that from a robot. It's not programmed to show disgust, let's say. But you're certainly going to get that from a human being that has interests and interests that are being thwarted. And so just looking at the situation, you know that this is at some level, you know, not innocent because there's suffering going on, where there's suffering, there's innocence.
True.
Yeah. Yeah. Just sort of scanning some of the other pieces toward the end of the document. Yeah, I guess, I like what he does in four seventy-seven as well, two lines down, "I, on the other hand, presume him free," the Negro, his wording, "unless he has proved to be otherwise. Let us look at the objects for which the Constitution was framed and adopted and see if slavery is one of them." And then he quotes, "We the people of these United States, in order to form a more perfect union, establish justice." And so it's up against all these, right? Justice or domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare and secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our posterity." And then he sort of goes back to those objects in the, in that paragraph. "Union defends welfare, tranquility, justice and liberty," and these basically don't square with the institution of slavery. Which liberty certainly is the case, you know, justice as well, tranquility as well, right? You know, uprisings, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I like a few, few lines down. It's language is "we the people," not "we the white people," not even "we the citizens," not even, or "not we the privileged class," not "we the high," not "we the low," but "we the people." You know, not "we the horses, sheep and swine and wheelbarrows," but "we the people, we, we the human inhabitants." So, strong language there.
Yep.
Yeah. I am, I mean, I, I sort of concluding comments, you know, impressed with the piece, makes me want to learn more about him. There are more, you know, writings by Frederick Douglass. And I can only imagine what it was like in eighteen sixty to be, to be debating this, you know? As someone who was able to get freedom and then obviously become literate in order to make the argument and in order to write it as well. Sort of that, that whole, the whole sort of like phenomenal, phenomenological slash existential feel of what it must have been to be him. So, we should probably move to Brown versus Board of Education.
Yes.
My note. It's there. I think, isn't it directly after Plessy?
Was Sweater Painter part of it? No, that was before it too. Wait, I'm confused.
It's page, sorry, page ninety-one.
Okay.
So landmark case, nineteen fifty-four, also reargued, which I'm sure we'll talk about. Brown versus Board of Education of Topeka, Kansas. So. Yeah, basically you've got the justices ruling unanimously that racial segregation of children in public schools was unconstitutional. This, this formed one of the cornerstones of the civil rights movement and helped establish the precedent that separate but equal education and other services were not in fact equal at all. So this, this, you know, had we had more time, but we've read so much over the past academic year, we probably should have squeezed in Plessy versus Ferguson, which was an eighteen, was that right? Oh yeah, eighteen ninety-six ruling by the Supreme Court. And in that one, they argue, the Supreme Court argued that racially segregated public facilities were in fact legal so long as the facilities for black people and white were equal. And their majority opinion basically argued that segregation didn't violate either the Thirteenth or Fourteenth Amendment, Thirteenth being ending slavery and Fourteenth being guaranteeing a due process and equal protection. So the Fourteenth Amendment plays large in this case. So, yeah, so it's really attacking the separate but equal doctrine.
Yes.
And we, yeah, as I said, we were in the, we were in the nineteen fifties here, so a little bit closer to our time now. So the specifics we have is basically, the plaintiff was Oliver Brown and he filed a class action suit against the Board of Education of Topeka, Kansas in nineteen fifty-one because his daughter was denied entrance to Topeka's all-white elementary schools. So there you've got the spark, as it were, of the case. And actually, in the lawsuit, in that lawsuit, he, that's when the Fourteenth Amendment is appealed to in terms of, yeah, the equal protection clause. And Brown was basically claiming that schools for black children were not equal to the white schools and that segregation violated the Fourteenth Amendment.
Yep.
The wording of that is, "No state can deny to any person within its jurisdiction the equal protection of the laws." So. So yeah, we're, we're once again seeing how this very interesting document, the Constitution, is being applied in, you know, specific cases and obviously an important one here as it, as it relates to black Americans of the time. So, you know, into the future.
Yeah, and this Supreme Court case actually tied into multiple other cases that had happened, right? And been resolved. And they actually went back on, I think, multiple of them.
Yeah.
All except for the Delaware one.
Yeah, 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 so and I think it was, right, it was a class action. They, and the Supreme Court, because there were, there were a number of them. I think Brown's is maybe the first, I guess. But there were a number of these lawsuits, then they just grouped them, the Supreme Court decided to group them together. Two things that pop up in the the court's opinion that I noticed were sort of really huge were a was, was, was the, basically the, the defeating the separately equal piece in Plessy versus Ferguson. And then everything, and then the fallout from that. Okay, so if you're, if you're getting rid of the idea of separate but equal, then you can see how it's going to play out integrating schools and not keeping them separate.
Right.
And, and, and the arguments there, I thought were sort of interesting. We can get to those. But then the other big piece was implementation. And, and that's what I found like, like, reading the rest of this document. So we had a number of appeals.
Yeah.
Reading, right? I was like, oh, it was like, and there were questions of jurisdiction here, in other words, like to what Supreme Court have jurisdiction over the specifics of, you know, school transportation, the, you know, mixed zoning, which are all very interesting, you know? When it got to that, I was like, man, this is really, the second piece is tedious, right? The first piece feels, is of like, you know, concepts and themes and so on and so forth. It was like, this second, the second piece seems really tedious and technical. But I appreciated it from the side of, you know, again, and you might be able to comment on this too, because I know you've taken courses in education, but public education at this point in the nineteen fifties is, is quite a widespread institution in the United States. So it's not niche. I mean, everyone's going to school between, you know, you know, K and twelfth grade. So, and then. And so, so it's in every state, so on and so forth. And, and, and there's a massive infrastructure behind it.
Yeah.
So it made sense, like, in other words, I was thinking it was like, oh, I guess like Brown v. Board, Board of Education, one, because they called the second piece two. Great, you've got this law and now we know that they can't, you can't have segregated schools. And that's awesome, but it's like, oh wow, you've got this, this, this leviathan, this, this like labyrinth to figure out in terms of applying. So that part I found interesting. At first I was like, what is going on here, you know? And then I was like, oh, I was like, this is, this is a massive, public school education is a massive institution with a lot of pieces.
Sure is.
They've, they've got to deal with it. But then also, it does seem that the Board of Education, not all the school boards were all in line with how they were going to, well, if they were going to implement it or how they were going to implement it. Because you could, you could sort of like, you know, tip your hat to the law and say, yeah, yeah, we're going to, we're going to implement it. Deep inside, we're really racist. And so we're going to do certain things that look like we're implementing it, but we're really not.
Right. There were lots of issues there, like, I don't know if we want to go into it now.
We can, yeah.
So, so like there is, well, I mean, kind of from a higher level perspective, it's like, how do you, how do you deal with the remedies, right? Because that's what they're trying to do. They're trying to remedy the situation of the unfair segregation. And what does that mean? It's like, okay, well, there are schools that are all white and there are schools that are all black and we're going to have to change that. But then there's also schools that are like partial and the percentages are just different, right? So it's like eighty percent white and then twenty percent black or something like that, or even less. And some of the arguments that came up were, were like, oh, well, if you don't put any enforcement on the like ratio or, or the number of students that are going to be in the school, then you're going to see schools that are just going to disappear and relocate to areas where there are more people in that, like the white population, for example.
Right.
And that's an issue because that's like, that's doing segregation in a different way, basically. Trying to dodge the law and go around it. It's like, oh, well, hey, if people, if that's who's in our neighborhood, then that's who's in our neighborhood kind of a thing. That's, there's a, there's a larger issue there. And this was very interesting because to me it was like, yeah, there's this, there's this long-going, you know, racist nature that's kind of in people and maybe not all of it is racist, but there is definitely there. Like some people, it's just like a cultural thing. It's like, they grew up with people that are like them and that's how they're used to it. And anything different is just different and weird. It's a social thing. And that's hard to dismantle, as we've kind of discussed a little bit before. So not all of it, you know, not every person involved is going to be from a racist perspective. And though, like, so this kind of comes at it, it's like, well, okay, you're trying to solve the problem of racism and well, actually, I mean, I guess technically, from a legal perspective, they're just trying to solve the problem of segregation, not necessarily racism, right?
Right.
But racism plays into that. And because it plays into that, you're seeing those, those loopholes trying, starting to form. And you kind of get the question, it's like, okay, well, is there a way to, how do you solve that instead? And what I'm trying to say is like, to what degree can you put enforcement in place such that you get rid of the issue and, and without, like, without disrupting kind of anyone from a legal perspective, like in this kind of capitalist society, you know, where, where there is freedom. And that was kind of one of the, the cases that they kind of bumped into. And ended up being, like, being something they had to do for a period of time at least.
Right. No, I, I, I agree. I think that the, 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 I mean, a couple of things that you said that stick out to me are the whole idea of like, yeah, the specifics of sort of avoiding the law, right? You know, because, right, as you brought up sort of like the zoning element. Also too, I would look at the flip side too, and then, I mean, I guess the way that I would have done it would be, you'd have to seemingly for a particular, so whatever, let's say you have a district, a school district, and then you have a, a, a sort of drawn-up boundary of what that district is and who lives in it. Seems like it would have made sense to do a census of some sort, just to find out sort of like the racial makeup of kids, of kids K to, K to twelve age that need to be in school. And then you, once you get that, then you start that distribution in those, with those schools in that district as representative as possible, right?
And I think that's kind of what they were trying, that came up where it's like you match, you kind of match the distribution in the area.
Right. What was, there was a number, I forget what it was, seventies. It kept on coming up.
In the finger plan or no?
Might be, was it, I'm not remembering this. Oh, the, no, this was, yeah, this was.
The board plan?
Yeah, the racial balances or racial quotas, one eleven. The seven, well, but their quote, yeah, the seventy-one to twenty-nine percent, right?
Right. I don't know where that came from.
Yeah, so I didn't know, well, is that, they're probably dealing with a particular state or a particular region. But anyway, something along those lines where, where you're, you're finding out, you know, because obviously you're not going to have, it's not going to be fifty-fifty. You know, it's not going to work out that way, you know? And then you have to think about where, where you're plugging kids into schools of different grades, right? Elementary, middle and high school. And then the question also of distance in terms of bus transportation. You don't want, you know, in other words, if you, if you actually are trying to hold onto the law, you're trying to hold on to a certain percentage and you got to drag in, let's say, people from sort of an urban environment into the suburbs, then that's going to become another issue. You're like, hey, I'm at least trying to hit the quota here. But at the same point, we're giving them a long bus ride.
Yeah. Not to mention that, that also is expensive.
Yeah, exactly. So I can appreciate even for the well-meaning school board, the difficulty of trying to apply the law.
Yeah. It also, so I guess I kind of mentioned this, but I don't know if I said it in the way that I wanted to say it. One of the issues this really kind of brings to light is how much do you enforce? And how much do you kind of let society figure out, right? Like, how much do you say, oh, well, school, you have to meet these requirements in order to not be a segregated school? And how much are you like, okay, as long as you don't segregate, then you're good. As long as you don't segregate, then you're good. And like, where's that line drawn, you know?
I mean, I think what's interesting, it's sort of, well, it goes back to that line from the uh. Federalist Papers, right, about if all men were angels, right? If all government were angels, and I and I think the the reality is that. I mean, obviously, like, I mean, when it comes to like morality. You can't legislate, you can't legislate virtue ethics, right? I mean, you just can't legislate it. And I mean, maybe Aristotle could in his regime, but like, you just can't, you can't legislate it. It's the, it's it's ultimately something that happens, you know, with an individual that wants to, you know, better his or her character. And start to inculcate these virtues and trying to legislate it seems odd. I think you could probably work toward educating it, which does connect to law and government. Meaning in other words, like in your public schools, there are obviously gonna be a s- a set of values that the instructors are gonna encourage. Maybe at minimum, just to maintain peace, you know, like things like anti bullying campaigns, that clearly is a value, you know? But I I the interesting thing about law as well is that law, the, when a law is made. And and this is not entirely true um for everyone, but it seems like when a law is made, you could probably point to certain examples. That, and let's say it's a good law, okay? That that citizens over time. Begin to really embrace it. Now, that's not gonna, we're gonna read Roe v Wade next week, then that's not gonna be true of everyone on the right, let's say. Um, as it relates to abortion, right? The law's been around since nineteen seventy three, but it's not like, hey, every everyone has embraced it. So I, there'll be, there'll be holdouts, I understand that, but it does seem like. That uh, that the force of legislation can alter behavior and and for the better. You know? The. I mean, I'm trying to think of an example here, but like. You know, the force, I mean, just take something like, you know, drunk driving. Would there be more cases of it if there wasn't a law against it? Is it making people be a little bit more careful uh as they as they're out drinking and they've driven to said location? Thanks to Uber and Lyft, are people utilizing that more, you know what I'm saying? Like, it's, it's. Are you there?
I'm here, yeah.
Yeah, it is like, like, it seems like, I mean, I it it, there's part of me that doesn't. Like the feel of it, but I do, like, even, but we just take the law with what about what we're talking about, like the thirteenth amendment. Ending slavery, I mean, now, obviously, it's gonna take a long time and we're just, what, a week out of the uh. George Floyd verdict, right? You know, obviously, there's still race problems, but man, people are not gonna be viewing, you know, whatever. The majority of people are not gonna be viewing uh African Americans as objects and property. At as they were in the seventeen hundreds and eighteen hundreds before the amendment was passed.
Right.
So, you know, or even like um giving the women, women the right to vote. Now, I mean, we we're not dealing with too many cases with women, although Roe v Wade is relevant. But like women, like sort of entering the workplace, place, so on and so forth, you know? Like, like whatever legislation occurred, although some of that might have been cultural too. Seems to have, it it can, it can shape and reshape views, you know?
I don't disagree.
Yeah.
Now, on your, uh, I don't think that your example for like drunk driving applies because.
Okay. I I was, I was just grasping.
Yeah. I don't, trying to describe why, but basically because um segregation was an issue that existed. And nee- needed to be addressed and broken up, whereas like.
Sure.
Drunk driving wasn't, drunk driving was as like, always been considered not. You know, detrimental to people, right?
Yeah, yeah.
I I think.
No, but I I think.
Smoking or something like that might be better example.
Are you getting to the fact that that the, with segregation, you have a deeply ingrained?
Yeah.
Peace?
One, it's deeply ingrained, and then two, it's, it's um. You're really dealing with like two types of people, right?
Right.
I mean, not exactly, but you know, you're dealing with the people who wanna separate and you're dealing with the people who are, who don't wanna separate.
Right.
Um, and wanna, who don't like the unfairness of the system. Whereas in like other examples, you're not, you're not seeing, I mean, basically, it's just unfair, this is just unfair. And the other examples, there, it doesn't have that same quality to it.
Yeah, no, I got you, I got.
So it's like, it's like people should.
You're dealing, you're dealing to a degree, I mean, drunk driving does, can deal with other people.
Well, yeah.
Doesn't necessarily deal with other people, but you're talking about a whole, let me, the the. Right, they're not analogous in the sense that you're talking about uh two huge sections of the population. And how one views the other and how they viewed them for a long time. And yeah, how from the outside, as as we're looking back, uh now, we're looking at it as incredibly unfair, right?
Right, because it's, I mean, it's a moral issue at its core. And, oh man, I lost the word I was gonna say.
Moral core, moral at its core.
Yeah, it's moral at its core. Oh, man, I was gonna make a comparison. It's not, okay, we were talking about drunk driving, talking about.
These two, it it's it's how one population is viewing the other, the other population. The um, yeah, it's sort of deeply ingrained, we already said.
Yeah.
Maybe it'll pop up.
Yeah, maybe, ah.
You're like, it's right there.
It is, um. Dang it.
Can I?
Yeah, it's a, it's like, it's a moral issue, so. Um, like, I mean, you could argue drunk driving is is a moral, and it is not a a moral thing to do, right? But. We're talking about an issue, one, that's deeply ingrained, like you mentioned, and two, that that is moral. And you've got these structures that already exist and are perpetuating this unfairness. And the unfairness is like the core of the issue, because you've got people who want to. You you have people who want to be fair, who wanna live in a fair society, a fair system, have those equal um rights. And then you've got this set of people who are trying to just take advantage of the system. Or who are just being illogical in how they're responding to uh their environment.
Yeah.
And, right, so when you're trying to dismantle something that's immoral, right?
Right.
And something that's deeply ingrained, it will probably take uh kind of like a firm hand, at least in the beginning.
Yes.
And then, when it changes, hopefully you don't, the the hope is that you never have to do that again, right? Like, you don't need that firm hand. And like, you just, you push society in the right direction, they get there, and you don't need to address that issue again, that's the hope.
Yeah.
Like, I, for example, in our, in my sociology class, we watched a video, I think it was Jane Elliott, who was a. A teacher um who taught on this very issue of segregation in her classroom. And she did an experiment with uh treating her kids unfairly based on their eye color. And they learned very quickly, like within the, she did, she said, okay, basically, people with blue eyes, you are amazing. And then people with brown eyes, you're not, you don't get to go in the playground, that kind of stuff, did that for a day, swapped the colors the next day. And then kind of had like a lesson at the end of it, it's like, how did you feel? Does it make sense to judge people by their eye color, compare that to skin color? It doesn't make sense, and like, it was crazy. There were implications, like, the students who were the, who got the positive label. Actually performed better on that day in like comprehension tasks. And then the the people who had the the negative label performed worse, and it was like noticeable differences, it was crazy. But but that to say, it's like, uh, what, so basically, one of the things she said was. Uh, I don't want this to be something that's integrated into every school, I want it, I want it to be that, that we don't have to integrate this into the schools.
Yeah.
And that's kind of the issue with this topic, is like, if something, if you're talking about a moral issue, you don't want to have to teach against it. Like, it should become self evident.
Yeah, and I, but I, and I, but I, I think it just, it, I mean, it it takes time, it takes time.
Absolutely.
Um, and and not only that, I mean, here's what, we're also assuming, well, maybe we're not assuming, but one might assume as as. As we're discussing, is that we're all rational and we all care to be rational. And we all, and we, and we wanna get over prejudices and things like that, well, no, you you mean, you're gonna have. Sector of the population that that doesn't give a damn about that, that stuff. And is, and and therefore needs the force of the law to at least scare them from mistreatment. Or or, you know what I'm saying, or worse. You know, I mean, that's, I mean, and that's the, yeah, that that's another piece of it, by the way, I think the example that you just gave, which is brilliant, by the way. That the teacher and the eye color is a perfect segue to the argument. In uh Brown uh versus Board of Education one. Which we should talk about.
Yeah.
But but it talks about. It does a lot of things, but on page ninety five. It um. Should I just lose my page? Is it ninety five or was it something else?
Well, are you talking about the tangible factors?
Oh, 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 uh, yeah, well, um. Gosh, what was the uh? Sorry, um, it's after he starts talking about. Yeah, I guess, yes, I guess it would be the tangible factors, but, yeah, 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 that was, that was. Well, whatever, I'll just read it, the segregation, so that's the the primary question they're dealing with, right? After the preface, as it were, uh of children in public school. Solely on the basis of race, even the, even though the physical facilities and other tangible factors may be equal. Deprive the children of the minority group of equal educational opportunities. The. At 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 some other point, and I'm forgetting where. Is uh, sort of in this, oh, yeah, is that they they end up looking at. I mean, essentially, the argument is, is what is the effect having on the child?
Yeah.
Okay, and and I'm not putting that in my own words, I thought I saw it in the text, um, but what, what, yeah, what's ultimately the effect here? You know? And in your example, obviously, there's an effect, right? The sort of exercise they did at the school on eye color. But uh. Yeah, I I felt like that there was a, an element here, well, they even quote uh another case, right? Uh, below on ninety five, segregation of white and colored children in public schools has a detrimental effect upon the colored children. The impact is greater when it has the sanction of the law. For the policy of separating the races is usually interpreted as denoting the inferiority of uh the Negro group. A sense of inferiority affects the motivation of a child to learn. Um, and I, and I think what's interesting there too, that, I mean, that's another thing about the law. Wh- which is stated in this quote, right? The impact is greater when it has the sanction of law, I mean, isn't it, you know? So it's not just that the the that law is gonna be in there to force behavior. But also, if you know that there is a law backing this up, I mean, let's say that you might be sort of young and not a cynical adult. You might be looking at that as sort of like, this is law, this 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 must be important. The, the, in in this first case, by the way, I mean, and I'm sure you noticed this and appreciated it, it was short.
It was.
The argument is.
I was actually kind of disappointed.
Yeah.
I was like, wait, that's all it goes to?
Yeah.
I was like, I was expecting.
I mean. I mean, basically. You've got. I mean, basically, it's, at the beginning, it's a summary of these cases. Children being denied admissions to schools intended. And uh, it points back to uh, the fourteenth amendment, right? Segregation was alleged to deprive the uh plaintiffs of equal protection of the laws under the fourteenth amendment, so there you go. That that's going to be, that that's gonna be a key piece, whether or not there's equal, like, how how equal is this segregation? And I thought this was really important, that with the reference to Plessy versus Ferguson, under that doctrine, equality of treatment is accorded when the races are provided. Substantially equal facilities, even though these fa- facilities be separate, and that's basically the core, that it's like, no, this. That that there is no, you know, equality there, but maybe tease that out, why, why do you think that's the case?
I mean.
What if the facilities were the same, what, I mean, in the same, like, resources and so on and so forth? What would, I mean, if it were the case, obviously, I would imagine white schools possibly had more money to work with. But let's say that there was an equal distribution of money, what would be?
Well, and I think there might have been in some cases, because I think there were larger organizations that held multiple schools, and they held some that were all white. And some that were all black, so the money could have, might not have been the issue there, but yeah, I think, even if you assume that the facilities and. The money and. The, if, even if you assume all of that is equal. You're not gonna have the same quality because of the history that's just led up to that point.
Sure.
And you're also not gonna have, like, there's something that diversity brings to education that you just don't get without it. That's probably a side point.
Right.
But I also don't know if there, if the, if the teachers in these schools were of the same, like, if they were segregated as well. Because, well, I I imagine that could pose issues as well, because like, if you assume that there's. If you assume that it's like you have white teachers in both schools, then there could be just, there could just be bias in that end. And. Okay, this is making me think of something that we just talked about in my socio linguistics class, which was the issue of Ebonics. And the Ebonics controversy, which appeared in schools and part of the reason why. People of color would score lower, like particularly black people would score lower in IQ tests and SAT tests and stuff. Um, was because those had a language segment to them, and um because of the history of how they developed their language. And it kind of, you know, came from other countries and developed and merged with uh our American English, their their language is actually. Different.
Right.
From kind of what is considered the standard proper English, and I'm putting air quotes around that, because English is a lingua franca now.
Right, right.
But that was kind of the core issue as to why it was unfair, is because they were having trouble. Learning the language that was expected of them, and um there were lots of things done to actually. Ha- like, help them learn how to code switch between their kind of uh native, native isn't the right word, but their kind of. Uh, own version of of English and the pro- the quote unquote, school proper English. Um, and that actually helped a lot, but uh that that would have been one of the the biggest issues, I think, with having unequal. Like, if you have, if you assume standardized testing across all the schools, right? You have segregated schools and you have the, the white schools are being taught as they always have, right? They're gonna be scoring pretty well, and then all of a sudden you bring in a school that's only black students, and they've been using their language as they use it. Their modified English, basically, right, their own uh version, and they're kind of forced to be tested. Under the same standards as the white students, they're not gonna be, they're not gonna perform as well, just because they're, they haven't grown up with. The same kind of language. So that's kind, that's, that's one of the biggest issues, yep.
Yeah, I the, also too, the, I mean, the the fact that there is a history of racism in our country. And a history of of slavery attached to. and a history of of slavery attached to a particular race, that he, like, like, I mean, it poses the question, I mean, I mean, to go, to go back to what we were talking about before the call, about the importance of the why question, why even segregate?
Mm hmm.
So, so not, not like, oh, it's been segregated, we've done this forever, blah, 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 but like, why even do it? Why are we separate? And in, and so, and as soon as you answer that, right? You're either gonna have in in irrational response to it, which basically defeats the idea of segregation, or whatever your answer is going to be to it, is is probably some element of difference. There is a difference between us, you know? And part of that difference, I think, like, I mean, and and part of that difference is going to have the stigma of the treatment of African Americans in our country for hundreds of years.
Mm hmm.
So, so that, that you are segregated, and that, you know, you're, you're in your black school, and you, you know your history of slavery and Jim Crow laws and lynchings and all of that, you're gonna be, you're, it's, it's, the segregation becomes a further uh stigma. You know?
Yeah, absolutely.
Even if you had, I, even if everything else was sort of quote unquote identical.
Mm hmm.
So, um, I, you know, that, the, the um, yeah, that that you have been oppressed is is certainly going to ring into your minds. And also too, the I, part of, part of separation, um, I think also plays a a role on how you view the other, right? You know, I mean, even if it's something as lame as team sports, it's easy to demonize the other
Mm hmm.
because they are the other. Um, and, you know, whereas if you're, you know, integrated, a lot of those things start to, well, will hopefully um fall, fall apart.
Yeah.
And be dismissed, you know? I I think in the, in the case, the, the this turn toward the importance of education
Well, did you cut out, oh?
It always happens at least once.
Yeah, always at least once.
Hello?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Okay, I'm on speaker, but I'm not hearing you well.
Oh, hmm.
There we go.
Okay.
Uh, but but this, the, you know, it's like, uh, I did find it, it was like on ninety-five, we must look and said, to the effect of segregation, itself on public education, um. And a little further down, we must consider public education in light of its full development and its present place in American life throughout the nation. Only in this way can it be determined if segregation in public schools depr- deprives these plaintiffs of the equal protection of the laws. So they go down, and it was sort of interesting, like, the next paragraph speaks about the importance of education to our democratic society. Uh, very foundation of good citizenship, cult- transmission of cultural values, later professional training. In these days, it is doubtful that any child may reasonably expect to succeed in life if he is denied the opportunity of an education.
Mm hmm.
Um, so, um the, I I think the real sort of crux you know, comes down to the uh, the idea that um or maybe I need to make the connection, actually, between, you know, well, I mean, we, I mean, we sort of, I I I, we have been talking about it. Uh, you keep them separate, then, I mean, I brought up the idea of like, you know, stigmatization, also too, you, you talked about whether or not there's really equality, uh, let's say, as it relates to sort of standardized testing and language acquisition, right? So, the uh the yeah, I guess, I guess, I I I, I don't know, I guess I still need to find out why, like, what what other sort of deficits, you know, in in education occur through that separation? I mean, some of the things I was talking about were more, whatever, psychological, let's say.
Yeah, and those are a bit harder to measure, perhaps, um, so I don't know, I don't know exactly how you'd address that in a court case, but it's definitely an important aspect.
Right, right. So, I mean, my point is, like, I, my value is toward integration. But I'm still trying to wonder what what are the detrimental effects of the segregation? That the integration is resolving.
Right, so
To the couple.
I don't think we have the full picture. Um, there's, there's a bunch of footnotes here that refer back to other cases, um, so yeah, on one ninety, or on ninety-three, there's a couple cases that they just have like a reference, three forty-four US one, da, da, da. And
Right.
I don't know exactly what, like, what is entailed in those documents, but it seems like
Right.
maybe some of the cases that this is kind of bringing together have more of that tan- tangible evidence.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I guess the other element too is, I mean, I would just go, it may be back to the idea of like personhood. You know, if it is the case, um, you know, that the United Sta- the United States is now viewing uh African Americans as, you know, whatever, fully uh human, full persons, full citizens, then why are we keeping things separate?
Yeah.
Why does the one have the same advantage? You know, I mean, this would be true of sports, sports, I know, sports, that, uh, uh, everything has its history around race in America at some level, in terms of someone trying to get into it, right? I mean, sports had it as well, um, so it's, you know, the, you know, what's, what's the purpose of having two schools? What's the purpose of having a colored baseball league and a white baseball league, right? At at some level, if you're all fully realized citizens, then you should have um this, you should have the right for the same, you know, competitive sport, the same school, you know?
And not, not to mention the fact that, where do you draw the line with people who uh, you know, mixed races, and then also, it's not just black and white, there's people from other cultures that have come to America. So do you create a separate school for all of them?
Yeah.
Okay, I found some references, though. Um, if you look at ninety-two, uh, the first reference here, which we actually have underlined, um, it doesn't have like hard data, but I imagine if we dug into it, it would say it, but it does say, uh, the three judge district court convened under twenty-eight USC two-two-eight-one, two-two-eight-four, found that segregation in public education had a detrimental effect upon Negro children, but denied relief on the ground that the Negro and white schools were substantially equal with respect to buildings, transportation, curricula, and educational qualifications of teachers. So despite having all of those same things equal, there were detrimental effects, and it doesn't
Right.
explain what those were, but I
Well, you could probably break it down, I mean, not to fully speculate, and I know our time is coming to an end,
Yeah.
but you probably could break it down to psychological
Mm hmm.
skill related.
Mm hmm.
Right, you think about like, what is a kid doing in school, right?
Yeah.
They have a psyche, so there'd be psychological implications, and then also on their education. So, and and I, and I wonder whether or not there was a quality issue, not because they were being taught by uh black instructors, but it could be the case that there, there was some even of that. In other words, if there was a generational lapse or gap in the education, let's say, of um black teachers, then that'll affect their ability to fully educate. And no comment on their race, just comment on their condition, you know?
Yeah.
Were they going to black colleges, so on and so forth? Um, you know, were they, were they, were they well funded? Yeah, I'm thinking about the teachers, you know, and what kind of edu- what kind of um, you know, uh, skills are they bringing, you know, into the classroom? So, yeah, I hate to stop abruptly, but alas, I must.
True.